Several times and see what happens. Is it still sharing screen? A little different from Zoom. Sorry.
Yes, I can hear you.
You're very, very soft, Ashwin.
I'm on the phone. I didn't, I tried to log in through the WebEx. So I am going to continue on the call.
Carl. So Carl. Be great, including the callers that are calling in. We're going to get Carl to unmute. Andrea, can you unmute Carl? Andrea, are you able to un-
I'm sorry, I want you to turn, he's all set.
Great, go ahead, Carl.
Okay, hold on. Um. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the West Hartford Prevention Council. Welcome. The meeting will come to order. This is Carl Shields, Chair of the West Hartford Prevention Council, and I'd like to welcome you to the virtual June 11th meeting of the council. Because in-person attendance at public meeting is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B, which permits municipalities to conduct public meetings virtually. Commission members and some town staff are participating by WebEx. And members of the public can access this meeting by calling 1-408-418-9388 and using the access code 1323729359. Because of the virtual format, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before I be- These are for all the commission meetings. First, I ask that all precipitants to please mute your devices when you are not speaking. If you wish to be recognized, please raise your hand and I will call on you. If you are participating via audio only, or I do not call on you and the debate is ending, then please unmute your phone and let me know so that I can recognize you. Second, pursuant to Executive Order 7B, all speakers must state their name and title each time they speak. Third, because of the difficulty in tallying voice votes on a video conference, I will require that votes be taken by roll. Fourth, I would like to describe how the hand raising process will work. Unfortunately, our conference technology does not allow us to identify individual callers by name. So when the public comment portion of the meeting begins, which is near the very end, the moderator will randomly unmute one call-in line and ask everyone to state their name at the same time. The voice that we hear will belong to the person whose line is unmuted. That person will then be recognized by the moderator and asked to restate their name and provide their street address. We will repeat this process until we have unmuted every phone line. It is very important that you say your name each time you are prompted by the moderator. If the moderator unmutes a phone line and does not hear a voice after the prompt, that phone line will be removed from the conversation. I will now call the roll. Um, Jean Schenschel. Jean Schenschel?
She's waving, she's present.
Oh, I can only see part of your head. Okay, you're waving, all right.
Sorry, I had unmuted.
Okay. Nordia Napier? I can't see you or hear you. But I saw you come in.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Jonathan, hi Nordia. Jonathan Merritt? I know you're here somewhere. Oh, hi. Myself, hi Jonathan. Brenda McKeon?
Present.
Hello, hi there.
Hi.
Howard Dziewski, hi.
Present.
Hi.
Hi.
Kedzo Kangwana?
Present.
Hi there.
Hi.
And Heather Alex.
Present, hello.
Hello. And I see some ex-officio members also, Helen. I don't know who else is here as ex-officio. Okay, thank you. So we definitely have a quorum tonight. Um. So. Um, I would like approval of the minutes of February 13th, 2020. I know they were included with the attachments that went out earlier. Um, I don't know, I hope folks have gotten a chance to read them and review them. Any questions or amendments or revisions? You did a wonderful job, Jonathan. I must say they're very comprehensive. There's a lot to them. If no questions or revisions, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of February 13th?
I shall move.
Uh, that Jean makes a motion to move. Could I have a second?
A second. Howard, who is, Howard, yes.
And all in favor of accepting additional, could you please raise your hand? Okay. Um. I see Alex raising her hand. Maybe individuals could speak, I guess. I don't see a lot of people, so.
I have my hand raised, Carl. This is Heather.
Okay, uh, okay Heather, great.
Kedzo raising a hand.
Okay, Brenda?
Brenda McKeon raising her hand.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes.
This is Gina Verano. I'm Deputy Quarterback of the Council for the Town of West Hartford. I want you to know.
Good, thank you. You?
Good. So there's a little bit of protocol when you're taking a vote because not everybody is on video and not everybody can see each other. Some people are on audio, some people are on video. What we require is that you take a vote by roll call only every time you take a vote. So no hand raising, no voice vote. You need to go through each member and call it by a roll call. So if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chair, the motion was made in second, and if you wouldn't mind going through the roll and asking for each member to vote yea or nay. Sorry, it's a little bit cumbersome, but in order to make this work virtually and to record everybody's vote accurately, we need to do it by a roll call. Thank you.
All right, so Jean Schenschel was, she made the motion. Nordia?
Approved.
Approved. Jonathan?
Yea.
I approve. Brenda?
Yay.
Um, Howard, you seconded. Uh, Kedzo?
I approve.
And Heather?
Yay.
Okay, you got all that, Jonathan?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Um. Old business. Uh, needs assessment, surveys, and reports. I sent people, council members, kind of a summary with six links of reports and PowerPoint presentations. Uh, there's a lot of material there, an enormous amount of material. And, um, over the last six months, I've had conversations with the council about, um, doing a needs assessment regarding mental health and substance abuse issues in the town of West Hartford to sort of determine what the needs are within the town and particularly with some of the changes going on. And volunteered really to look at what might be out there in terms of data and what needs assessments may have been done coming from the background that I do and know that hospitals often do a lot of this work. As you know, I went to St. Francis Hospital and got their needs assessment and what information I could that they had done in West Hartford and shared some of that preliminary information with the group. What I circulated in those six documents is primarily from needs assessments and documents that came from the work that Demus did with the University of Connecticut. You will see in those documents some of the needs assessments that UConn did for this region, not only for the state of Connecticut, but this region and for West Hartford. So it's global, but it's also West Hartford specific, which I think is very exciting. Um, so the first one, the mental health indicators, I gave you a little synopsis of what that is. Um, and, you know, some of the information is kind of disturbing. Thirty-one point five percent of Connecticut students felt sad or hopeless. At times in the last year, twenty-four point five percent felt that they could get the help they need, which means about seventy-five percent felt they could not get the help they needed. Um, eighteen point four percent inflicted self-injury during the school year. And that's statewide. Um, there's also, you know, we have our own West Hartford data that we could then, over the next year, look at and compare that to. Um, thirteen and a half percent seriously considered suicide and eight point one percent attempted suicide. So, and for LGBT kids, thirty-two percent seriously considered suicide. There's some basic language in there about reviewing functional models for mental health and substance abuse. So we'll have a common language over the next year as we talk about this. Um, the second document, there's a flow chart for all the organizations involved, and you'll see there's a lot of acronyms in here. It's a lot of gobbledygook really, but there's a couple that are going to be very relevant. I don't think the whole committee is going to have an enormous interest in knowing all of these details. It might be a subcommittee. But some of them are going to be important. The SEOW, the State Epidemiological Outcomes Work Group. That's a major organization funded by Demus that looks at data statewide. Um, and they've been doing it for decades. So we need to know about them. They have an open data portal and they can get specific by town. So that's really important for us to know. Um. And there's a lot of acronyms here for federal, state, and private nonprofit organizations. Um, the third one, the Connecticut State Report. That one again begins to become more local, town by town, which is helpful for us. The fourth one is major substances of abuse. It also includes pain medications, alcohol. There's a lot of sources for data there. Overdoses. Um, emergency room data. Some of the things we asked about and said, how do we get this? Well, it's there. Emergency room data, prescribing data by age group, by gender, by race, by culture. Admission data, treatment data, overdose deaths, um, heroin deaths, fentanyl deaths statewide and by region. Again, things when we're talking about what is going to be important for West Hartford, we can get specific. Uh, number five. This is using publicly available data for needs assessment. This is trying to match up some of all this data that I talked about with a community to find out, well, what's important for this community. It can be overwhelming. So it's trying to pare it down and make it specific. And finally, Substance Abuse in Connecticut by the Alcohol and Drug Policy Council. Um, there's actually two versions of that report, one in April and one in December, but, um, it's really enormous amount of information and I think you'd got to pick and choose in that. And it's statewide. Again, but it comes, you can pick and choose and pick out the West Hartford data. That's what you want to look at. But when, again, we were always wondering, well, what about West Hartford? How does it compare to other parts of the state? That's where we're going to find it. So that's when, we're going to know a lot better about what we want to look at come the fall and we want to have discussions about these sorts of things. So some light summer reading. And that's my update on the needs assessment kind of discussions that we've been having. Uh, Prevention Week activities, as you know, all of those were, kind of went by the wayside because of, um, what happened with COVID.
Excuse me, Chairman. Carl, this is Helen Rubino-Turco, Director of Leisure Services and Social Services.
Yes.
And I just wanted to chime in a little bit about those Prevention Week activities. Um, as you know, numerous members here worked hard to try and develop, um, so a robust, a schedule of events, and we focused on wellness. And although the, um, the theme may change next year, I think some of those activities that, um, that we worked on, including, um, the, so the positive, the wellness things that, that we had, had worked on. They included planting pollinator gardens, doing a, a walk, um, at the Holy Family Church in the labyrinth. Um, there were some other very positive, um, activities that have been planned. Um, you know, we might be able to put those in our back pocket for next year, um, and maybe utilize some of them. But I also wanted to, um, before we move into, um, the next phase of our business meeting, I just wanted to also acknowledge that we have, um, a new member joining us. Natalie is with us and she's a student at Conard High School. And, um, so we just wanted to formally welcome you Natalie and hopefully another student as well. And, uh, we're not usually so, uh, you know, structured, but because of this, um, format, it's a little hard for us to be our, our usual, um, our usual selves. Um, but Carl really wanted to share all the research that he's done and give us a chance to kind of review, um, the work that has been done to see what we can glean from that and build our own, um, knowledge base about something that's specific for West Hartford in terms of the kinds of services that we need and where our focus should be in the coming, you know, couple of years. Knowing, of course, that things change all the time. So Carl, thank you so much for doing all of that, that work and the presentation as well. So that was emailed to everybody with links to the documents. Um, some of them are a little bit more wordy and dry. Others are more like PowerPoints. So, um, what we hope to do is give you some time to look at those over the summer and then in the September meeting, maybe focus on kind of really getting into that a bit more.
Yes. Yep, thank you, Helen. Okay. Um, Helen, would you like to do the Social Services Director's Report?
Sure. Um, uh, I'm going to introduce, so I, I believe we have two staff members on the line. Astrid Calderon, who did chime in, and I think Jackie, um, Zia Edgar is also on the line. Um, and so one of the things that I know, um, aside from all the Prevention Week things that we had been working on so hard that it was, it's very hard to let go because those were really great. Um, I, I believe that we want to, Astrid wanted to give a report on the changes on the Amplify Grant. So, um, this council also works as our local prevention council. And, uh, so we do receive some funding from the state and the rules around the allocation of those grant funds needs to be discussed. So Astrid, are you able to, uh, give a presentation on that?
This is Astrid Calderon, Manager of Social Services. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my report is the following. For this last year, we have to edit some of the activities for the local prevention council funding due to COVID. Uh, this grant is a, the, it is for the amount of $7,000, $141. And it was given to us, the municipality, through the Social Services Department because we have the substance abuse, the, the West Hartford Prevention Council, which is also our local prevention council. Um, this last year, we, um, are giving, um, some of the same funding to some activities that we believe that are appropriate. Since this is a grant, the grant have requirement. This is a grant that people have to, organization have to request the funding and have to have reports after the money is given. Uh, for this past year, uh, we are giving funding to The Bridge for the, the Every Family Newsletter. Uh, we are also supporting our first hoarding disorder self-help support group, which is based on Dr. Tolling's book, The Buried in Treasure. This was supposed to be a group in the community, but now it's happening, but in a virtual format and people are very excited. Uh, in fact, we have a long waiting list for the second session of this group. It's been facilitated by two clinical social workers, Karen Paquette. You met her a couple of meetings before. Um, she is also the, the leader of the Safe Home Task Force, which is for the town of West Hartford. Um, and, and also she is with Deanna, an expert in hoarding. So this is for people that are, that wanted to be supported, family members or people that have any condition related to anxiety or OCD that they believe that they are suffering from hoarding. Um, so it was, this, uh, grant is supporting that. It's for fifteen sessions, two hours, a total of thirty hours. Uh, the other initiative that, um, we will continue to, we eliminate the, uh, funding for the state grad because- grad because that was something that was canceled last moment due to COVID. And we are supporting the Town That Cares Card, which is distributed to the police, fire, all the schools that have all the emergency and resources for mental health substance abuse for all populations, that it's being funded. It's a card that is in a foldable, foldable, and it's small, so people have it as a wallet, et cetera. So I can give you a complete report by email as we finish. I wanted to tell you that for the next application for this grant, the rules have changed and we are in the process of learning about what is that have been changed. And basically, the state of Connecticut, through the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, have identified that vaping is, has emerged as one of the largest concern among youth. And this year, the money for this grant need to be applied to that. So the next application have to contain and have to follow two main goals. Number one, to reduce vaping among people that are 12 to 18 years old by targeting related risks and protective factors, and increasing public awareness of substance abuse prevention. So for this coming grant, we have to include activities, at least one activity that we will be supporting. We are going to have a meeting with Amplify to be aware of more and be educated about what exactly is, how much of the portion of this grant have to be used for vaping. As soon as we have that information, we will share it with the group. It doesn't have to be the complete grant probably, but we don't know. And this grant is only for $7,000. So it might be that we have to use it for all, or we can include any other small activities that, the same way that we have been doing in the past. So that grant need to be completed by July. So unfortunately, because we're not going to meet, we will send this information by email. Any questions for me so far?
Um, no.
About the grant, I can also tell you a little bit more about what we have been doing during COVID if appropriate for this commission.
Thank you, Astrid. This is Helen. I just wanted to, I had held up a, I have one of the cards in my hand here, so I'm just holding it up. This is the small card, the West Hartford Cares Card, that has crisis services, mental health, addiction services. It has numbers and resources on it, and we distribute this to a lot of sources, including homeless, students, and anyone that, you know, we have it in various places, through the library, through the senior centers. So it's a wonderful, very short, quick document that just has a wealth of information. And Amplify, just in case you don't know, is the name of the organization, that the name has changed over the years, but it is the organization that gives us this grant from the state. So when Astrid says, refers to Amplify, that's the name of the organization. And as she said, you know, this is a moving target because we're still, you know, this is new information for us, so it will affect, you know, how, some of the activities that we have supported in the past. But as she said, we're going to see how, if there's any wiggle room, or if it all has to go towards vaping issues, or if it can be some vaping and it sounds like some public awareness just of any kind of substance abuse prevention activities that we're doing. Thank you. Astrid, did you have an additional report to give?
Yes. This is Astrid Calderon, Social Service Manager. I also wanted to let you know that last year, it was with a request from the Organization Act for HAB, and this is the organization for, that distributes Naxalon to the communities. We met once with the town of Bloomfield. We started a relationship with them and they, their function is to distribute and educate residents and everybody in the community, including a first responder with Naxalon for this opioid issues that we were having. So we met once, all of our meetings were canceled during COVID. The next step, we are trying to catch up again by email. And the next step will be that this organization will send a letter to the two town managers for, to formally offer this distribution to both towns. So we're going to be working with the Division of Social Services and the Department of Health, which cover Hartford, West Hartford and Bloomfield, and then us to make sure that we can have more education and more distribution of Naxalon in our town. Again, that's something that is in the making, in the planning stages. As soon as we have more actions, we will continue to report. In general, during this COVID pandemic, we have been majorly working on basic needs in our communities. So just to let you know, and this is not related to exactly a mental health or substance abuse, but of course, it have an impact on a lot of people, all of this crisis that we have been going through. So basically, the Division of Social Services have doing a lot of assessment about needs in terms of food. We're going to be facing another stake in this process, so a lot of people have been running out of money. Basically, they have lost wages, jobs, et cetera. So we're working with multiple organizations to make sure that when there's a full opening, we can help residents either to find a job, to apply for labor, that, to avoid eviction and to avoid the shut off of the utilities. We're trying to also apply for other grants or other funding. This is more of a town-wide effort in order to make sure that people have access to childcare when they have to go back, et cetera. So if anybody have any questions for me about that, I'm happy to answer, and that will be all my reporting.
Thank you, Astrid. Very well done. The West Hartford Bloomfield Health Department Report.
Good evening, everyone. This is Helen Drohan, one of the Public Health Nurses for the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. I hope you're all well in this tumultuous times that we're having with the COVID pandemic. Just a few things that the Health District has been doing. We have been working quite nonstop, doing contact investigation, reaching out to people, making sure that all the nursing homes and the assisted living and everyone is getting what they need for PPE as well as testing, and also talking to all the patients who have either been positive or their contacts, so that we can help them figure out how to get themselves tested and to keep them safe while they're self-isolating and to continue to almost be an arm of the PCP. We can give them advice that they need in case they run into problems with symptoms. So it's been a long, long few months. But I also have to put a shout out to Astrid because many a times, we've also worked in tandem, when we've had clients who cannot get out and do their own grocery shopping or needs, special needs. The Social Service Department of West Hartford has been very helpful, as well as the police and the fire department. We're in constant continuation with contact with them as well as with the Health, the town manager. One thing I did want to mention though, that in the next few days, I think it's going to be a week from next Thursday or next Wednesday, we are going to have a special testing site over near the Hillcrest area. And we are in the process now of working with the agency that's going to be setting that up and getting out information to that area so that we can get people in that area that may not have access to testing sites to come and get tested if they need it. And a lot of our flyers, should we, will be in different languages to help people out in the event they have to self-isolate, and that's one of our projects. The other project that we're doing, of course, is ramping up now for probably a very busy flu season. And one of the things that we will be doing in September is actually doing our first drive-through clinic at the DPW area down in Brixton, I believe, just to see how that would work because in the event, that might be the only way we're going to be able to do flu clinics safely. And that's to be determined, what we're going to talk more about that. But we will definitely be doing a fly, a drive-by. So I think that's kind of my short and concise report. If anybody has any questions, I'll gladly take them. I'm going to put myself on mute right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's obvious, an enormous amount of work is getting done by folks out there. Very impressive. West Hartford.
This is Helen Rubino-Turco. Helen, thank you for that report. I have a quick question or a request. If you could let us know about the Hanukkah area testing site, I just want to make sure that we can pass that information along to Suzanne Osslander and her team for help in publicizing that. Thank you.
Okay. West Hartford Public Schools Board of Ed Report.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on. I pushed the wrong button. If anybody has any questions, I'll take them off and I'll put myself on mute. Thank you.
This is Ari Steinberg from the Board of Ed. We are, we've wrapped up at least for a month or so, but we'll be meeting again probably early August, sooner if other things arise. We are currently looking to fill Sean Payson's seat. So we are right now actively looking for anyone who would be interested and will be holding interviews and getting letters of interest in the next week or so. So that's where we're at.
An extraordinary year for the Board of Education.
Yes. As a new member, I have to say, this is not what I expected. But, but, you know, we're here to do the work, so we'll just keep pushing through.
Kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Youth Services Bureau Report.
I'm sorry, this is Helen Rubino-Turco. Tor Fisk, did you have anything to add for the Board of Ed's school report?
Sure. Hi, everybody. It's good to, it's good to see people. We've been saying that online on a daily basis. It's amazing like how excited everybody gets when they see, see a face of somebody different outside their own immediate household that they could talk to for five or 10 minutes or whatever. But yeah, just incredibly proud to be a part of West Hartford Public Schools and the way that the district was able to move to an online platform. And then the ability of many, many people, teachers, administrators, support staff, office staff, to serve multiple functions outside their normal roles, to help connect families to town social services, medical assistance, to technology, helping with food insecurity. And so thank you to many of the organizations that are part of this call for the partnership and collaboration that came together and has helped support people through a really difficult time and continues to help people through a difficult time. So hopefully, things will keep slowly improving and moving in incremental stages towards a better or more normal circumstance. Like right now, I think I could speak for Heather and Brenda and everybody that we're really just trying to chunk this out, just get to the end of the year before we even think about what next year's going to look like. And then I want to echo, I know Helen had already introduced Natalie De La Cruz, but if I can make this Connerd-centric for about 45 seconds and introduce her some more. Natalie's going to be our Connerd representative. She's a sophomore year. She's one of my students, so I'm biased, but she's an amazing young woman that I'm convinced all of us are going to be working for her someday, and I'll be happy to do so. Natalie is taking it upon herself to help us really get a Heron Project Club started here at the school. For those of you that are not familiar, Chris Heron is a former NBA player that really has, that struggled with substance abuse and that ruined his career, but he's turned that around and makes a living now of going around the country, encouraged, speaking to young people, professionals, athletes, you name it, about substance abuse and prevention. And their organization is kind of built on top of that, and it's really just an overall wellness initiative now. So he spoke at Connerd Ann Hall probably four years ago and really left an impact on a lot of people. We love his message. I think it supports a lot of what we do as a community. So Natalie's organized in this time, a Heron Project Club with a focus on prevention and inclusion, has created a social media platform that has gotten some messages out to our students, to the community, has been noticeable enough that the Heron Project itself picked up on it, contacted her and said, hey, we're following you now, we like what you're doing, how can we help keep this going? So I think that looking for bright spots during this time and things that we can build on in the future that will be really, really good, this is one of them. So I'm really proud of that. I'm very proud of Natalie and what she's doing and very excited about the platform that the Heron Project Club can give us with students and building a positive culture around prevention and wellness in the future.
That's great. Can you spell that, Heron Project? H E?
H E R R E N.
H A R R E N. Okay, thank you.
H E.
Great. Thank you.
Carl, this is Helen Rubino-Turco. I believe that Natalie would like to speak.
Oh, great. Thank you. And then I think Nordia has a question for the group.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say hi and also sharing another bright spot about the Heron Project Club. Just a quick report of what we've been doing. So we did a May Mental Health Challenge where there were things like going on a walk, baking something, reading a book, making sure you drink water. And our newest project is creating something kind of like Link Crew, which welcomes freshmen, but instead for transfer students. So right now, we're gathering information about people in our club, and then we're going to send that to our administration and hopefully get paired with transfer students for next year so that they can show them around, have a new friend. Thank you.
Great. What a great idea. And Nordia, did you have a question for the group?
Nordia, I think you need to turn up your microphone, the volume on your microphone.
No. It popped up on my screen, she had a question for everyone.
Yeah, she wants to speak, but she can't, you're unmuted, but we couldn't hear you. So see if there's a microphone on your keyboard. If you have a Mac, it might be F12. No, we can't hear you.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll have to move on. The Youth Services Bureau Report.
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Merritt, Youth Services Coordinator for The Bridge Family Center. Just want to give a quick update on how kind of a, you know, Just want to give a quick update on how kind of COVID has changed our programming from March until now, specifically with our state of mentoring in schools and our state of the teen center with their use and their peers. So mentoring, we were able to continue everything virtually. We had mentors meeting with mentees in March still, even though school was closed. So we did that via whatever we had available via Zoom, different other platforms that were virtually able to meet with students. We did hold 60 sessions in March, serving 27 youths. So that was, that was great that we were able to kind of continue that in March, even though we switched pretty quickly to that. April, our numbers kind of dropped a little bit, but we did still hold 49 sessions. But we're only able to contact about half of those youths. So we had about 15, like 15 youths drop from mentoring due to COVID and due to not being able to connect with them virtually, whether that was because the parents didn't want them to or because the youths themselves didn't want to continue mentoring that in that way. But we also held 32 sessions in May. The state of the teen center, we also did all of our teen center programming virtually. Teens have been participating in activities like movie club where the teens would choose a movie for the week, they would watch it, and then we would come together and discuss it. We have a girls' group that's been really successful, hearing really good things about that. We have the leadership group, which is 14 members strong, doing really, really cool things virtually, really relevant things, and they're very teen-focused. We had True Colors come out and present a few weeks ago to, you know, our leadership group is pretty heavy with representation from the LGBTQ community, so they wanted that. And so we had True Colors come out and speak with the teens about homophobia, how to deal with that, and other identity issues. Last week, we had a colleague come out to speak, who was also an activist, to speak about the George Floyd tragedy, and then also talk about Black Lives Matter and activism with the teens with that. So that was pretty good. We had other guest speakers. We have community projects also that we're kind of planning for the summer. We also have a book club of five members, a game group, kids coming together, kind of like just interacting as a teen center. So our programming really switched to virtual and we kind of ran with it. And we're looking to continue into summer programming, hopefully as restrictions are lifted a little bit, to do some in-person type things. We're planning on doing group mentoring for up to 11 youths. We have two staff available for that. We're going to continue our leadership group and do a leadership summer program for another 11 youths. We're going to have some teen center activities, including photography. We have the garden club at ECC. We're doing a garden cleanup and planting, we're doing a garden cleanup project and planning to commence that next week on the next Tuesday. So we're going to clean up the gardens and plant a bunch of stuff at Elmwood Community Center and take care of the gardens for the summer. And then we have, you know, we're buying a lot of gear with biking, fishing, and other outdoor activities that we can offer youths to kind of stay outdoors. Limited indoor space, so it's going to be a challenge to kind of figure out where we can launch. But we're also, we're also doing a day of individual mentoring for up to eight youths. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we've been doing.
Or you're transitioning more to kind of interactive stuff still. Great. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
The West Hartford Prevention Partnership.
Thank you, everybody. You can.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, Carl. Hi, this is Kent Lord. I'm from the Institute for Community Research, and I'm the coordinator for the West Hartford Prevention Partnership. And I know everybody was sent a quick report that narrowed everything down to about five pages of the work that we've been doing in West Hartford since 2010. I'm not going to go over all that, but I would like to direct your attention when you look at this document to really look at page four. That has a substance use trend chart into looking at the trends over the last 10 years. You know, it also has links that you can click on that will bring you to some informational products that we've created with other members of the community here in West Hartford. We have videos, various videos that we've created on how to properly dispose of unwanted medications. There's also brochures that were designed by teens from the teen center on stress management and so on. So please check that out and please check out the link to our website as well. There's a link on the fourth page that will direct you to the website. You'll find on the website, it's really a wealth of resources on a variety of substances and prevention topics. We also have blogs written on reactions to local drug-related news, et cetera. I know we're running a little bit close on time here, so I also want to just discuss briefly a couple key takeaway points from when we looked at the data from the West Hartford High School Risk Behavior Survey. For alcohol, of the 1,966 students who took the survey, 23% reported drinking at least one time in the past 30 days. So this rate is slightly lower than the national average. And this 23% is declined since 2013, when this rate was 25%. And I believe even in 2011, it may have been slightly higher than that, at 30%. Of those 23% students that reported drinking in the last 30 days, 12.2 have reported getting drunk at least one time. We found that most students who drink are drinking at home parties. And of those students that reported drinking in the last 30 days, 25% or 111 students reported drinking alone. So this was, you know, that should be an area of a little bit of concern. We also found that there's no difference between drinking rates in either of the high schools. They were very much the same in all substance use categories. We did find that students who identified as non-binary drank significantly more than those who did not. A few key takeaways for stress and mental health, there were four mental health indicators: estimated current stress level, two or plus days of sadness or depression, if a student has ever self-harmed, and if a student had ever had suicidal thoughts. And again, when we looked at the data, there was no difference in the prevalence of mental health indicators between schools. We did see, though, that more than 50% of students are stressed on a regular basis. And about 25% of students reported ever trying to self-harm or having thoughts of suicide. So overall, stress and depression indicators are high in highest in females. And the non-binary group of students have reported higher rates of self-harm. And then lastly, some of the key takeaways from vaping, you know, 23% of the 1,966 students reported to vape at least once in the past 30 days. These rates have tripled from ninth grade to 12th grade. Students are, say that friends are viewed as the major source of obtaining these vaping products. And among those who reported vaping in the last 30 days, 20% vaped daily. So, you know, that's a pretty high percentage of students that have the potential for addiction with this. And we do see that the rates have increased quite significantly from 2017, when they were 14%, now to 23% in 2019. So Jay, is there anything that you would like to add that I may have left out?
Not in terms of content, but I would just like to sort of mention to the groups that the flyer reflects in particular the many products that are available for use around prevention, many of them produced by West Hartford Youth. So I think we really hope that you will make use of the website to identify those products, curricula, films, videos, and so on, because I think that especially if a group of young people got together and looked at them, they might find them still useful. The second thing is that I think these data, there are more data, a lot of data. We have now analyzed all the data. We have the data in PowerPoint format. Those data are going up on the website, and there will be a written report that probably will be a PDF that will be sent out to everybody sometime over the summer or in time for the fall. So that should help with the needs assessment moving forward, especially as the school system plans to implement its own survey that will probably continue some of the primary trends that the council would like to see followed over the years. So the last thing I'd like to say is that I think the, I suggest for the council moving forward in considering health and wellness, that you and under the leadership of Carl, have a look at the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation website, because their whole program for the last six or seven years has emphasized health, the culture of health and wellness. And I think you might find some good ideas and contacts there that will help that concept moving forward in West Hartford. So I will say one last thing. I think this is the last time, unless the council so wills it, that the Prevention Partnership will appear as such. And it's good to see that many of the ideas and lots of new directions are taking place after a long period in which I think we've all worked really hard to place prevention at the forefront and now prevention and wellness in the town that I live in and am very proud to be part of. So, and maybe you'd like to say something else in the end about any plans over the summer or anything else that you would like to mention to the group before we close it out?
Just that, you know, like Jay mentioned, that we will be, you know, a report to the group this summer. But I would also just like to thank everybody. You know, we had some great collaborations here in town, and it was really fun, you know, being part of Prevention Week, as the mayor declared. John, it's been a lot of fun working in the teen center. Tor, I love meeting with your group. I'm going to miss it. So thank you very much, everybody.
We are available by phone if there's anything that any of us or at the West Hartford Prevention Partnership can offer, or the Institute for Community Research, which is a reservoir of capacities and skills around research and drug use and intervention. If we can offer anything to the West Hartford Prevention Council in the future, we would be very happy to do that. So just consider us friends of West Hartford Prevention Council.
And always had wonderful experiences with them, so I'm glad that has been my case also with this time and with the West Hartford Prevention Partnership. And it's all been positive for me. So I want to thank you for all the contributions you've made to West Hartford and the town that I live in also. And I will be calling you. So thank you so much for all you've given and the model of collaboration and the kindness you've given and the number of young adults and adults you've helped in this town.
Carl, this is Helen Rubino Turco. If I could say a few things? With your permission?
Yes, Helen, please do.
On behalf of the Department of Social Services and the town, we also want to just thank Ken and his team at Prevention Partnership over the years. We really appreciate your energy and your thoughtfulness and your time, because you put a lot of time into various projects that help further this mission. And so we thank you and Jay for your commitment to this task and this mission, this prevention mission. So thank you very much. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Jonathan Merritt, Youth Services Coordinator, if I could just say one thing?
Sure, Jonathan. Go ahead.
I really appreciate ICR and Jean and Ken both, and you know, Ken's predecessors as well in working with the teens of this community. You guys have been very supportive for us in providing programming and providing funds and providing, you know, safe spaces for teens in West Hartford. And I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate you and, you know, your collaborative spirit and your energy. So thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, John.
We're there when you need us. We'll pull out weeds in your garden.
We know that. On the evenings, the weekends, the times when a lot of people don't want to work, so that's been the case. We'll be in touch, okay?
We're always there for you.
Definitely.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Ken. We'll talk soon, okay?
And of course, and good luck with all of these, the really wonderful plans that you have moving along and the importance of the needs assessment for the future of West Hartford.
Okay, thank you. Okay, how about upcoming events or activities of interest? I just wanted to comment on the fact that we have one empty council seat. If anyone knows, I'm Benjamin Grippo, substance abuse counselor.
Carl, are you, Carl, you might have two, because I'm not sure what my status is. This is Jay.
Oh, yes. Okay. Are you interested in remaining, Jay?
I don't know what the rules are, and I would certainly be happy to, but it would, you know, I think you need to think about what you need. I'd be happy to serve if I could be useful, but you might have other needs.
I don't know what the rules are either, because I'm new in this role too, so I'll find out for you.
Okay. I will wait with bated breath.
Okay. Okay. Nordia, did you have a question that you wanted? I don't know, we never did get to you because you've been muted. Are you live and in person now?
I'm here, just can't hear.
Oh, I can hear you now. Do you have a question?
Oh, you can hear now?
I can hear you now.
Oh, thank goodness. I was like, what is going on? No, I got some of my questions answered. I just asked to clarify the process for superintendent, and then I asked about working with the, is superintendent more getting information from the public health department? And that was answered, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And I want to thank Jean and the team as well. It's been a great, I mean, I came onto this council wide-eyed, and they were great with initiating and teaching. I learned so much. So thank you for all your hard work and hope to work with you in the future.
Thank you, Nordia.
This is Helen, the public health nurse. Was that about the Board of Ed with the help of the health department?
Well, I'm on some other parent groups, and a lot of the parents are, you know, obviously are into the data and what's coming up with school start, so I would just wanted to clarify.
Well, I will clarify for that. We are actually right now, as we speak, working on a lot of the protocols and all the updates that the schools are working with right now. And we're monitoring, you know, we're modifying some of the protocols and everything, along with the Board of Ed and the health department, as well as the DPH and the C2C requirement. So we're doing that all right now as we speak. I just finished one today for a draft. So we're working on it very So we're working on it very diligently, just to let you know.
Yeah, I would assume so. I just think, I will assure them that it's a collaboration with the Health Department, the Board of Ed, I mean, the superintendent and others who need to be a part of it so that a good plan can be drafted for the fall.
Andrea, I believe this is the part of the meeting for public comment. I think you take that part?
Okay, everybody, all the phone people are unmuted, so.
Okay. So you, when we come to adjournment, and then I'll take over, okay?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So you, you would take the questions and bring them to the group, and then after that, I would take over the adjournment, right?
Well, all the talking, you would hear it all anyway.
Yes.
Okay. Does caller three have any questions? Does caller four have any questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, this is Carl. Hello? Yes? I'm here.
You have to unmute Gina Verano.
I'm here, I am. Okay. So Andrea and the chair, if I have a suggestion, handle the calls. I'm not sure all the callers can identify themselves and see themselves on the screen as a particular call-in user number three. So my recommendation to introduce each one of the callers would be caller number three, whose number starts off with 965, would you speak? And identify yourself for the record, and then wait for a few minutes, because it takes some time for people, including me, to mute and unmute the phone to become available to speak. And then if after a few reasonable seconds, which seem may an eternity sometimes, if you don't hear an answer, then I would close out that caller and move on to caller number four. So please, caller number four, whose number is identified as 860-523, would you please speak? And I would go along identifying each one of the callers, giving them an opportunity to speak.
What about in the circumstances like in caller number eight and caller number four, they both start with 523?
Then you have to go through, try one at a time and see who answers first.
All right, in that case, caller, call-in user number three, whose number starts 860965, do you have any questions?
Hi, surprise, this is Jacqueline Edgar, social worker. I have no questions. Thank you.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, Carl.
Hi, does call-in user number four, whose number starts in 523, have any questions?
This is Helen from the Health Department. I just want to say to everybody, please remember, this pandemic is not over. Please follow up the calls and keep yourself safe, and I hope that you all stay well. Thank you.
You too, Helen.
Is call-in user number five, whose number starts in 798, have any questions? Does call-in user number six, whose number starts in 604, have any questions?
This is Afton Calderon, manager of Social Services. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make myself available by email, by phone during the summertime, even though we're not going to be meeting, we're going to be active and planning for next year. I hope that everybody stays safe. Thank you.
You too.
Does call-in user number seven, whose phone number starts in 203560, have any questions? Does call-in user number eight, whose number also starts in 860523, have any questions? That's all the call-in users.
Yay!
Okay, Mr. Chair, this is Deputy Corporation Counsel Gina Verano again, so the floor is yours.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, I'm going to call for an adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Someone raise their hand?
Hey, Carl, I'm sorry, that was me, Ken. This is Ken Florida. I raised my hand. I just wanted to, I know they can be a little bit shy, but I just wanted to say the great work that our, our youth peer advocates who are on the phone right now, David and, they have done, you know, a lot of work on the website with their blogs, and David, a lot of teen centers. So I just wanted to, you know, I know they're going to miss everybody as well.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Could I have a, a motion to adjourn from one of the council members?
Well, this is Jay. I saw moved to adjourn.
Okay, Jay. And do I have a second? From a council?
This is Brenda McKeon, I second that.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Okay, let me go through the rest of the members. Nordia, do you vote?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, you agree. Jonathan?
Yay.
Yay. Carl, yay. Howard?
I vote to adjourn.
Okay, Cadso?
I vote to adjourn.
And Heather?
Yes, I vote to adjourn.
Oh, we're unanimous. And our next meeting is Thursday, September 10th at 5:00. And have a lovely summer all. Stay safe.